At Plymouth, Massachusetts Town Hall, America's hometown by the way. Tonight we have a couple of cases and some informal business to take care of. I am going to ask the clerk to read the first case, case number 4164, Ryan and Kate Burke, Crafted Design Build, 168 Warren Avenue, Unit 6, Map 41, Lot 29-6, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Case number 4164, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of Ryan and Kate Burke requesting a special permit required per section 2039(c) to alter and enlarge a pre-existing non-conforming use and structure to add a second floor addition to an existing dwelling on a lot with multiple detached dwellings on the property of 168 Warren Ave. as shown as parcel 041000029006 of the assessor's map dated January 1, 2024 in an R25 zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request shall appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Seated on this will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be presenting? Please come to the microphone. Make sure the green light is on and identify yourself.
Bush, there we go. Hi.
Your name, please.
Jordan Race from Crafted Design Build.
Go right ahead.
So Ryan and Kate came to us with some desires to renovate the house. So you pretty much read it there. The project involves renovating an existing single-story home and adding a partial second floor. We're adding a total of 432 square feet to the building, which is just two bedrooms and a bath on the second floor there. We tried to respect the ridge height and not raise it too much and keep it really appearing to be a cottage. So the house goes from 724 square feet to 1,156 square feet. The biggest thing for them is going from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. So we took the two small bedrooms downstairs and combined them into one and added two bedrooms upstairs for their kids who are getting to be college age at this point. Yeah, we're replacing all the windows, siding, trim, all new insulation, HVAC, plumbing systems, everything like that, really. When you walked into the house before, it was pretty much like the wind was howling straight through the house and we're just going to tighten the whole place up. So yeah, happy to field any questions.
Any questions from board members at this point? Yes, David.
You know, I got the, you know, all of your visuals, your plans, your kind of a DVD, they're all quite good. How are you handling any extra parking that is required?
Okay. How are you planning to, you know, additional parking is required when you change bedrooms? And I didn't see on the site plan any identification of existing or future parking spaces.
They have the three parking spots there, so I'm not sure exactly what the requirements would be for more parking spaces for the three bedrooms to two bedrooms, two bedrooms to three bedrooms, rather.
I don't know off, I don't remember the formula off the top of my head.
1.5 for a bedroom per.
Yeah, so.
So, and around the next, so he's fine.
He's fine with three?
Yep.
Okay, because it, you know, the, the parking spaces didn't show on the plan. That's why I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We can deal with that. Any other comments at this time? At this time, I'm going to open it to public comment.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this petition? Please come to the podium and identify yourself.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Thomas Rook. I'm the president of the Warren Cove condo association, which consists of five freestanding homes and our little alcove on Warren Cove. We voted unanimously to support the petition of Ryan and Kate Burke for their expansion of their home. They've been great neighbors, they're wonderful people, and I'm not concerned about the parking situation. They have two young sons who are now teenagers, who I'm sure will have cars as they get older. But there's plenty of parking in their private driveway, which can easily hold three cars, maybe four cars, and is on-street parking in front of our house. Our house is directly opposite theirs, so if you look at our front door, we see their home. We have no concerns about the addition. The adjoining neighbors who immediately but them behind them and further behind them have no concerns about it either, and we voted unanimously to support the petition. I'm free to answer any questions if you have.
Board members? We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to us. Is there anything else you would like to add to this? No? Okay. I'm going to close the hearing and bring it back for board discussion only.
I'm voting to approve this petition. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, they're not increasing the footprint. Everything looks great and I'm fine with it.
I have no issue.
Yeah, I looked at it and I mean, they're not increasing the footprint, so there's no really on-site work other than, of course, the addition. He does have the park and I have no problems with it all, so.
Okay. I await a motion of the board.
Okay, well, let me, I just got to get down here, got to bring it up. I motion that we.
Wait a minute, we should look at the conditions, but I think that there was only.
There's two conditions.
Yeah, two, the, the standard.
Conservation and the.
Yeah, yeah.
I motion we approve case number 4161 with the two conditions listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It is, sir, it is unanimous. Go right ahead with your building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is case number 4165, High Rock Cranberry Crescent. And it is attorney De'N Brozja, Two Commerce Way, Map 105 and Lot 133. 1-33, I will ask the clerk to read the advertisement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Case number 4165, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of High Rock Cranberry Crescent LLC requesting a modification of special permit case 2946 to construct a retail motor fuel outlet and 12 fuel dispensaries, a 4,631 square foot convenience store, and a proposed 112-foot-long tunnel car wash per conditions 820 on the property of Two Commerce Way, shown as parcel 10500000100033 of the assessor's map dated January 1, 2024 in a GC zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, and Mr. Connor, and myself. And Mr. De'N Brozja, you will be representing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rob D'Ambrozo, attorney at law here in Plymouth with D'Ambrozo Law, LLC. And I've got a brief presentation that I'd like to make relative to this proposal for a gas station across the street from Market Basket at Two Commerce Way. So I've got with me Robert Kavanaugh, the director of construction for Energy North. I've got Rebecca Brown and Chris York from GPI. Rebecca's our traffic engineer and Chris is our civil engineer. And of course, I already introduced myself. So Energy North is my client. Through its Hafner subsidiary, it operates over 70 gas stations, convenience stores, car washes in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Maine. So, you know, it's a well-oiled machine, I'd like to think at this point, no pun intended. And we're here to satisfy a condition from existing special permit. So again, I think you all are probably familiar with this, but this is part of the larger Cranberry Crescent Shopping Center that I guess you'd call Market Basket, that anchor tenant, but it captures a couple banks, various other retail operations on a larger, I think, 17-acre, 13-acre parcel, something like that, 13-acre plot. It's in the staff report. In any event, in 1999, when this master shopping center was laid out, there were two conditions that said, as each of these pad sites that I'll call them, I believe there's 13 pad sites for various buildings, independent uses, as each of those comes forward, we'd like the ZBA to have another look at it to make sure that they're comfortable with what's going to go into these sites. So those are the conditions that we're here to satisfy, conditions 820 from that 1999 special permit. And again, this language that, that this board imposed in 1999, this condition is similar to others that we've seen when we've come back for kind of site plan review by the ZBA under an existing special permit condition. So the ZBA wants to know who's going to be there, what the buildings will be like, what the landscaping and parking layout will be like, make sure there's adequate lighting, that the architecture is appealing, et cetera. So we've covered all those details and we're happy to share them with you tonight, to the extent you haven't already seen them in the hard materials that have been submitted. So again, our site is just about 2.3 acres and what Hafners or Energy North proposes to put on that site is a gas station with a one-level convenience store that will include a coffee shop. is a gas station, uh, with a one-level convenience store that will include a coffee shop. Now, there's no drive-through. If you guys have been paying attention by some chance, about a year ago, the initial iteration of this project was also for a, a drive-through coffee shop and, um, and the layout of the site was different. It was inferior to what we've come up with now. Planning board asked to take another whack at it, so we eliminated the, uh, drive-through coffee shop to kind of reduce the amount of traffic that would be circulating within the site. So, uh, convenience store with an internal coffee shop, you'll have to get out of your car if you want a cup of coffee, um, and then a single tunnel car wash, and then, of course, 12 fueling stations, six, six to six dispensers, 12 fueling stations, two fueling stations per dispenser. Um, so, kind of a typical, uh, gas station, convenience store, car wash facility, and there are two, um, means of ingress and egress to this site, one on Commerce Way, the other one on Carver Road. Uh, so, again, just to rehash the permitting history a little bit, so you permitted it in 1999, like I went through, and then in 2013, actually, a predecessor came forward with a strikingly similar proposal for a convenience store, car wash, and fueling. Uh, that was approved by this board. So, this is not completely new ground. Not only is this a, um, use that, that's intended for the site, we don't need a special permit for the use itself, but this very same particular use was in the past blessed by this board. So, hopefully, we're not breaking any new ground here. Um, as I mentioned, we had some extensive back and forth with the, uh, planning board. We appeared informally and then, I think, three times, formally, if you want to call it that, with various iterations of the, of the site, seeking their feedback, made some tweaks and improvements. Um, you know, they had some reservations at first, but then at our last hearing last week, we got a favorable recommendation. They really liked how the plan has evolved. Uh, similarly, West Plymouth Steering wasn't keen on this in 2024. They thought the site was a little too busy, um, similar feedback to what the planning board gave us. Uh, we were able to win them over last week as well. So, they gave us a unanimous, uh, favorable recommendation last week. So, the, the local steering committee is happy with it. Uh, the fire department is satisfied that they can get their apparatus, uh, circulating through the site, uh, for emergencies, and, uh, the engineering, uh, comments are in good shape. We've got a couple that we need to address, which we'd assume you'll require us to address, uh, you know, prior to C O and building permit. I think that's set forth in the draft vote, the planning board vote. Um, but again, no, no heavy lift as far as our engineers are concerned with, uh, D P W at this point. And, uh, I can't probably walk you through the site as well as, as Chris here can, but I'll just give you the high level. So, again, this is our, this is our site, Commerce Way. Again, here's the shopping center that stretches, uh, down this way, and then here's Carver Road. And this is a vacant site right now. So, as you can see, it's been, it's graded, it's level, it's disturbed, um, and that's where, uh, that's, it's gonna be developed. So, it's about 2.3 acres. This is what it looks like now. So, you've got a little drainage depression there. It's gonna be reconfigured and, and again, GPI is working with the D P W to make sure that, uh, they're comfortable with the manner that the stormwater is being handled. And this is our layout. So, again, you guys have seen this. I don't know if you've had the benefit of a colorized plan, but again, we've got the one, uh, entrance on Commerce Way. This is a divided street, so you could see there's a divider there, um, Market Basket across the street, and then Carver Road running this way. This was one of the changes we made. Again, for what it's worth, i- it's only a right turn in and out from here. Initially, it was both directions, and again, folks at the planning board thought that was a little much. So, now you can only take a right out of here, only take a right into here, um, because it's a divided highway. Uh, and again, you've got, uh, one way in, one way out down here as well. Um, here's the fueling station, convenience store, and then the single-lane car wash. Again, I don't want to bore you with all the changes, improvements that have been made, but in, in the initial plan, the car wash was down here. Uh, the planning board thought this was too close to the exit and kind of would create a bottleneck here potentially. So, we've relocated it. So, again, if you want to get to the car wash, you come circulate this way. If there's too much of a line, there'll be two queuing lanes, but you can exit here if you want to pull the ripcord and, and don't want to get a car wash for some reason. And again, we've got plenty of parking. There's, uh, 35 parking spaces, 25 are required, and that doesn't even count the fueling positions that are available. So, we've got plenty of parking on the site. We've got a nice open area here, so there's good visibility from this, this entrance to this entrance, 'cause you've got a high canopy there that you can see under. It's gonna be a nice, modern, uh, gas station with all the amenities. Uh, we've beefed up the landscaping here from what was initially proposed, uh, at the request of the planning board. Make sure that that car wash tunnel is nicely screened with plantings. Um, and again, this area is gonna be, uh, drainage. Um, and again, those are the highlights. We've got some snow storage here, landscape island, obviously, some more landscaping here, and a bunch of crosswalks. The, um, planning board wanted to make sure we had plenty of crosswalks for pedestrian safety, and we've implemented those, put some additional signage in and markings to make, make it very clear to people using, um, the facility, how to get from A to B and, and where to go. Um, so, this is our current plan. Again, I don't need to rehash old news unless you'd like me to, but you could see the sites evolved quite a bit over time. And I'm just gonna skip ahead. I've got some more technical drawings here if we need them, uh, but I'll show you some elevations. These might be slightly stale, but I, I think, I think they're pretty good. They're, they're awfully closer. The, the square footage might have changed by 30 square feet or something of the convenience store since these were done. So, again, you can get an idea for, uh, what the convenience store is gonna look like from the front with the Hafners logo. Um, incidentally, in terms of signage, I should mention, here's some more elevations. Uh, you're gonna get another whack at signage here. We have to come back with a special permit for signage. I talked, actually, to Dispenser, and, and I think maybe Jason was even involved on, on the perimeter of that discussion. The master special permit for the shopping center, there was a companion special permit for signage, and basically, staff said, "Look, the signage that you're proposing on the buildings is fine. You could just kind of get through with this process without having to go through a separate special permit process, but if you want pylon signage, which most gas stations have to display the price of gas, that's gonna be a special permit." So, look for that. That's gonna be coming down the road in the next month or two, I would think. Um, a, a full signage presentation. Again, staff said, "If you're gonna come in for the pylon special permit for signage, let's just talk about all the spe, all the signage together." So, I may not present that, but just so you know, uh, there's another special permit process coming for signage, um, and you'll get a good look at all that. Uh, there's also likely another special permit coming for retaining wall. When the plans were initially done, uh, we thought we'd be under 12 feet, but it looks like we're gonna be over. So, again, that's another separate, uh, permit that you're gonna have a look at here, uh, down the road. Uh, here's what the car wash will look like. Obviously, that's the side of the tunnel, and we've got the branded side there. And this is a rendering when you're looking from the drainage swale toward the, uh, facility, uh, on Commerce Way. That's kind of what you're gonna be looking at once it's, uh, all grown in. So, uh, that should give you an idea of what's going on in the site, and, uh, we've got the whole team here if you've got any questions about the project. Thank you.
Attorney Deanne Brusco, did, I think I heard you say, um, exit on Commerce Way was just an exit?
Uh, yeah, right up there. It's a right turn only.
Can't come in there?
No, no, you can, but you can only take a right in there. You can't take a left because you got a divided highway. You can't...
And how do you control that?
I, I think there's a barrier here, right, Chris?
Not, not just a sign.
No, no, yeah, there's, there's an island here between the two lanes of traffic in this section of Commerce Way, so it, you wouldn't be able to take a left there. You'd have to jump the island i- if you're, if you're coming in, so.
It's not divided out there?
Yeah, uh, yeah, no, this is an island. Yeah, I probably should have given you the whole, um, streetscape there, but...
It was this morning. I'm thinking, I'm thinking yesterday.
I don't know if this would...
No, I, I just wanted to make sure, what we went through on Dunkin' Donuts, the no-left-turn sign is the most useful thing in the world.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
Pass one question.
Yes.
So, they can, uh, on Commerce Way, so they can only go in, so the only way to leave is out onto Carver Road?
No, you could leave this way, but you'd have to take a right-hand turn. So, you can leave both ways, but if you come out on Commerce, you can't take a left.
So, if you, so say you go back onto Commerce.
Yeah.
How are you gonna get to Market Basket?
You would have to take a right, go to the light, and then take a left.
Good real...
Doing a U-turn.
Are U-turns allowed? No.
Well, not our problem.
Well, Carver Road continues, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna make sense here.
So, it doesn't, so to me, so there are people that are gonna go there...
Maybe you can see it a little better here. So, so there's the Market Basket.
We got too many people...
Sorry, go ahead.
So, I'm just trying to figure out, 'cause if I go to Market Basket, I'm gonna wanna get gas, I would think. And so, it's gonna be very difficult for me to get to, to go to the, to go get gas and then to Market Basket.
Well, I think you're gonna have to get gas after you leave Market Basket.
Well, then I'd have to go right and then do a U-turn the other way.
No.
I'd, I'd say make a right and then a U-turn.
There's a shut through coming out of mine.
So, I can actually respond to that.
Yeah.
For you. Uh, for the record, Rebecca Brown from Greeman Peterson, so we're the traffic consultants on the project. We put together the traffic study. Um, so there are two, uh, driveways, one over here on Carver Road and one over here on Commerce Way. Um, as Rob said, this one will be, uh, right in, right out here on Commerce Way. Down at Carver Road, that will be full access and egress, so you'll be able to make left turns in and out there. So, someone who wanted to go to Market Basket would likely come out onto Carver Road and take that left-hand turn, then take a left-hand turn at the light and come into Market Basket.
Can you show with your pointer when you come out of Market Basket, how you take the left and then the right?
So, if you're coming out of Market Basket here?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, so if you're going to Market Basket and then to the gas station?
Yes.
You would come out here, take that left, and then a right into the site?
Yes.
So, my only concern is you first get gas.
We'll do it the other way.
Well, sometimes. I just wanna get some gas, maybe. It seems like it's awful if you're trying to get gas and then go to Market Basket. And 'cause Carver Road's a real busy road sometimes, very difficult.
I think Pete's right, though, was, look what we, down by Dunkin' Donuts, supposed to be one-way, and look what that does. We should have put a divider like we did out on Long Point.
So, I have no problems with what they're talking about.
I would say during busy times, too, I mean, people may come out here and try and make the U-turn, but they may also come out, take the left turn, and come all the way up here and around to get into Market Basket if, if it was so busy, they couldn't make that left turn out of Carver Road. There's a few different ways they can get there.
Yes, sir.
Isn't there a, uh, when you come out, there is a left-hand turning lane, uh, correct?
There is a left-hand turning lane, yeah.
So, if you, if you came out, back onto Carver, headed east, you'd immediately get into the left-hand turning lane. Can you show that?
Yeah, um, actually, is it on your site plan? Does it show the left-turn lane? Do you wanna advance it to the site?
You want this one or do you want the, uh...
Black and white.
Um, the color ones, or actually, yeah, actually, the black and white does show it. Actually, you just went by a... That's the old one, but it does show you the lanes out on Carver Road a little bit better. Um, so you can see here's the left-turn lane that's on Carver Road. So, when you come out here, you would be kind of right into that left-hand turn lane to go into Market Basket.
Thank you.
Any other preliminary question? Rob? You can continue.
Oh, oh, no, I'm, I'm good if you're good, yeah.
Okay. What I'm gonna do now, if the board doesn't have any more preliminary questions, is I'm gonna open it to the audience.
I mean, I said everything there is to be said. No, if, if they have something to add, I, you know, I figured they were here to field questions, but if they, you know, if you've got a...
So, Mr. Chairman?
The attorney has already answered two of my questions, which, separate permits are being, but showed as illuminated signs, but...
Yeah, well, it won't be, won't be internally illuminated, yeah.
And likewise, the, you know, retaining wall, 616 to 18 feet high, and, and Rob picked that up. Uh, my major question, and again, in 394 pages, you know, I can't say I found the answers. I want to make sure the smaller, um...
Yeah, sorry. Uh, with the, the smaller, um, drainage basin can accommodate, uh, the water both from this site, but looking at the, at where it also picks up Commerce Way, I think it was called area P8A and PR11A. Uh, and some of the earlier descriptions, they said, "Okay, we're fine for a two-year storm and a 10-year storm." Later in the report, they mentioned a 100-year storm and seven inches, but we, we're making the drainage basin smaller. And I just want to make sure that it will accommodate what are happening as, you know, 100-year storms every couple of years.
Yeah. I, I think it's gonna be deeper, but I'll let, uh, Chris York speak to it. Small, smaller in area, but deeper, I believe, but, but I'll let Chris give you chapter and verse, and we got a grading plan here, too, if that's all...
So, before we started this design, I specifically wanted to talk to the town engineer to kind of go over this with him, to get his okay. 'Cause we are making that existing basin smaller, but on our site, we're proposing, in this area here, a large underground infiltration system. That'll take all the runoff from our site, infiltrate it all, and then the overflow from some of the, you know, 200, 300-year storms will go into the existing basin, which is obviously a lot smaller now, but between the two basins, there is the exact same amount of runoff leaving the site, leaving the basin now, as there will be in the future, which is zero. We insisted that we make sure that there's not an extra drop of water leaving this existing basin going across the street to where it's currently going.
Well, I guess my, my question, I saw an overflow pipe, you know, whether that's coming from the bottom of your, your infiltration basins, or is that a scupper and an overflow?
There's an overflow pipe out of our basin, and there's an overflow pipe out of the existing basin as well. Those are just for the humongous storms, the, the far and above the 100-year storm. So, any, so anything 100-year storm and below is being infiltrated and no, zero runoff is leaving those basins.
Okay, the, that's my principal worry, and just as we've satisfied the town engineer...
Yes, he was insistent that we make sure. We originally had a design that had about one-tenth of a C F S leaving the basin in an 100-year storm, and he said, "No," so I want zero. So, we went back and made our exist, our proposed underground basin bigger.
Yeah, and deeper, I saw that.
And deeper, yes. It is, the underground system we have is quite large, probably the largest I've seen in a long time, just 'cause we have the depth of water table. So, we think they're nine-foot-tall chambers under, under the ground, so they can handle a lot of volume.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Peter.
Does, what a prop tunnel car wash, what, does that mean anything to me? I just wanna know about the car wash. Is it brushless? Is it, you know, whatever it is?
And, and by the way, I think that that's part of the reason the retaining wall changed is because the drainage swale got deeper. That's why we originally thought we were gonna not need a special permit, but due to changing the drainage, uh, kind of profile there, that, that's why we have to come in for that special permit. But, go, go ahead.
So, the, uh, the, the tunnel car wash is a touch. Tunnel car wash, it's, uh, internally a 110-foot run, uh, externally a 117-foot building.
So, does it have brushes and stuff?
Has brushes, yes.
Or is it just some water thing?
Yeah, uh, we have, we have a reclaim system as well on this.
No, I mean like the one at the other end of the street.
The other one is touchless, right?
What's that?
Isn't the one on the other end of Commerce Way, we have a touch. We have a touch with that touch.
Yeah, it's just high-pressure wash.
It's a high-pressure wash. This is actually gonna be a touch. This is gonna have brushes.
You have brushes.
We, this one will have brushes, yes.
It's gonna scratch my truck?
Nope.
That's the concern. Thank you.
That's operations. I'm construction.
So, don't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Stay right here.
I, I'm sure it's somewhere in there, but, uh, Jason, what about the water hookup moratorium? I was looking for that. I couldn't, I couldn't quite find it.
Uh, you know, I don't have anything specific from the water department unless there was something included in your pack to reflect on, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, we, we could speak to that.
So, we originally, back in 2023, when this project first started, we met with, uh, D P W Water Department, I forget his name, Peter Gordon. We went through, we filed a application for the water balance program, spoke with him a number of times. He was okay with the application. He says we can connect to the water. We're just gonna have to finish the application and it's gonna, it's gonna be the, whatever the, you know, the gallons per day of water we're using times, the, you know, it's gonna be money that he ends up, that, uh, Rob ends up having to pay the town for the water. But he did tell us that we could connect to the water.
'Cause that was gonna be my comment. I mean, the main, I mean, I, I'm sure you know, we have a water problem out there as far as pressure and the ant volume. Um, the, one of our next applicants is, uh, come to an agreement to put in a booster pump so they can move water from one system to the others, so on and so forth. So, but until then, I keep looking at this, um, I see you, it reads... So but until then, I keep looking at this, I see it recycles thirteen thousand gallons, what, in a day? But it uses an additional, what, two thousand three hundred and twenty-five on the car wash alone?
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. I think it's about.
Yeah.
We reclaimed about seventy percent of the water.
I'm looking at it, yeah.
Okay, I think it's two thousand gallons per day of fresh water and six thousand of reclaimed water.
And then it's got, and then the store.
The store has additional water.
Uses about six, six thousand, so the total comes to eight thousand something gallons per day. There is a water issue out there. I mean, I have no problems with this project. I looked it over. And I did have an issue with the signage, but you're coming back for that. I mean, to me, I don't, I know it says it's lit by sign bars or whatever, you know, but to me, it looks still like it's internally, but we'll get to that. Yeah, we'll get to that then. But the water, I'm myself, I would definitely wanna have the head of the water division to come in, because I, I definitely wanna it explain if this goes in before the booster pump, how we're gonna deal with it. That's a quite a bit of water, I would think.
Understood.
Yeah.
But, but like I said, we did meet with him. He did say we could connect to the water. He didn't make any, make any mention of needing a booster pump or tying into a booster pump, so.
Yeah, I mean, because if we went that far, I would definitely want some kind of restriction like until that pumps in. The shortages between four and eight o'clock at night when everybody comes home. I mean, at the least I would want until that pumps in is maybe even not letting the car wash open during those hours. I know it hurts business during those hours, but the other side of the coin is we can't pass something that's detrimental to the town. And that's why I would like him to come in and explain it, the eight thousands, where that sets us, you know what I mean? Not any reflection on you.
Understood. Understood. The car wash would be open eight to eight daily.
Yeah.
We're still about a year away from opening.
Excuse me?
Still about a year away from opening business out there. We're hoping to, this fall and winter, start to construct the wall, and then over the winter, kind of build the, start to, you know, the construction of the buildings itself, so probably looking at next spring.
Right.
For opening a business.
But somehow, I think myself, just from my vote, that has nothing to do with, it might be four others. I definitely am more concerned, my only concern with this big, this whole project, I've looked it over. I think actually the plans are excellent. I think they went through pretty good. Again, is just the water, and I definitely am gonna want to have the water department head in here to explain, you know, what, where we sit with this, you know? Because it is gonna make a drop in pressure.
Well, we have, we have no correspondence from them.
No.
Jason said the same thing.
Excuse me, Peter. Can the TV person fix the sound? We're getting way a lot of feedback. Thank you. No, we have had no correspondence whatsoever about the water for this project. And I'm gonna tell you right now, the project's fine, but the water isn't.
So I think that's our answer.
Yeah.
They gotta respond like I said.
Because we went through this before, and David was right about it, we went through it a whole bunch. Until they can, until the water department comes in here, somebody from the water department comes in here and says, yes, this is not a problem, we can supply this amount of water. I can't open this, because.
No, well, that's what I'm saying. We need something in writing from them.
Exactly.
It's okay.
Exactly.
I'm actually surprised we don't already have something from them, but. And you talked to them a couple of years ago?
We started, we started correspondence with them back in the fall of twenty twenty-three and probably early twenty twenty-four was the last correspondence we had with them.
That's the last time with us?
Again, they gave us the okay to connect to the water. I'm surprised there isn't any correspondence, you know, correspondence to have with them, but.
We don't work that way. They should have given us something then.
Well, so Mr. Conner, I would, if I could just interject, the DPW letter that you have in your packet, the most recent one, does have new water comments from earlier this month from May twelfth. It just says, be aware that this project must comply with the water division's water balance program. So, you know, they told us we could connect, but I think they said then, and they say now, you gotta comply with the water balance program, so.
So Mr. D Ambrosia, when we get something from them that says that this is where they're at, then we can move forward, but I know what you're reading. It doesn't say that they have said that this project is justifiable.
Right, if we don't comply, we don't have a, yeah, I acknowledge that.
So, so let's not prolong it. Let's just get to the point where you understand that the water department has to weigh in on this, that the water commissioners are, somebody has to produce documentation that says that our system can support that and not diminish supply in that part of town.
So, so Mr. Chair, just so we've got our marching orders, you looking for correspondence, or do you want them to come to a hearing, or?
Correspondence is fine, but, but I also, you know, if, if we can request separately, not Rob requesting it, us, I'd like to hear a little bit about this water balancing thing myself. Because if it's like Park Plymouth, that's not what I'm signing up for.
I don't think you're gonna get a beer.
Well, we're gonna get some kind of an answer.
An answer, yes, I agree with that.
Our bunch of cars aren't gonna get washed.
Yeah. I'll wash my own truck.
I mean, other than the fact that we're short, we have that water shortage, I'm fine with everything. It looks good. I think, you know, moving everything the way everybody want it looks good. Again, my only comment was gonna be on the signs, which you're coming back for, so not a problem. And I think that was my only comment, so.
I'm, I'm gonna keep this.
And there's, there's a few DPW comments that were outstanding.
Yeah, I would add, there's a lot of DPW, you know, the, the letter from May twelfth had a lot of condition suggestions, the parking lane, diagonal parking lane sizes. So, so we need, you know, responses to all the DPW comments.
So what I think I would like to do is leave public comment open and continue this hearing and give you folks an opportunity to get together with, with the people that you need to get together, get the information that you need, get your blueprints all straightened out so that we know, well, my question was gonna be about that diagonal parking also. But we can get, you can illustrate the traffic flow a little bit better. We can understand the water situation a little bit better.
Yep, the diagonal, just for what it's worth, that diagonal comment, parking comment, I think was, we think it was erroneous by DPW, but, you know, point taken, we know there's, and a lot of these comments are to be satisfied prior to occupancy, building permit. But, you know, it's your prerogative if you want us to come back with more answers or a cleaner letter and the water balance, a letter from the water division, we could do that.
And the blueprints updated. Is there anything else you want on those prints, David?
Well, not too much in the prints, but just have you considered solar? Especially on the, you know, that hundred-and-ten-foot-long roof that's facing south, but also on the building? So the question, have you considered it?
We have looked at it in other places and we just, we haven't gone further with it because of the the cost of what it does to us. The attachment details, the warranties, there's a, there's a lot of answers why. We haven't looked at the car wash, but in previous places, they've asked us to put them on the canopies. And it's just, the canopies, it becomes, it becomes so cost prohibitive, we don't, there's no rebate back for doing solar.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask though.
Yeah, understood.
All right, so, yes, Jason.
If I could ask a question through the board?
Yes.
As I look at this plan and I assume that the retaining wall again is, you know, I think you said between sixteen to eighteen feet, and that it's likely a segmented block wall. We have some similar situations where it requires a geo-grid fabric that extends horizontally back throughout the structure. And they show within this plan infiltration system that's located under that green area. And I wonder how that, those two will, that there's not an overlap of the two? Again, through the board, if that makes any sense.
Would you like to address that, and that needs to be represented on the blueprint too? But go ahead and address that.
Okay, so the wall is shown on the plan. We will, we will have a full set of wall design plans forthcoming within a month or so. Obviously, it has to be approved by the town and obviously structurally designed. So we'll have those within the month or so. I don't think they need to be for this, for this next meeting, but we'll double-check to make sure that the geo, that the geo-grid does not impact the, you know, the underground infiltration system.
What, I think it's, and it's only a suggestion, you don't have to do anything that I say, but I think it would be a good idea if you went and talked to Mr. Sylvia about some of the necessary things, so that when you get back here this next time, you have a complete package. We're supposed to have that design for that wall tonight. We're supposed to have all of this information tonight. And I understand this is new to you and in this town, but we want a full package. We can't go forward without all the information, and that's one of the things we need. You and Mr. D Ambrosia might wanna talk to Mr. Sylvia for a little bit before you come back.
Yeah, so if I, if I could ask Mr. Chair, so for the retaining wall, again, we, we know we're gonna need a separate special permit, but are you suggesting we've gotta get that done before we come back relative to the site? Because again, we're only satisfying conditions here, right? So, you know, existing conditions on an existing special permit. So we know we need that special permit for the elevated retaining wall, but I thought that would be a separate process. I just wanna make sure that that's, that you share that understanding, so we don't come back and not have the retaining wall fully designed and permitted and aren't able to move forward, so. What's, what's the board's pleasure on that?
The reason I mention the question about the retaining wall and the geo-grid, not so much the retaining wall and the leaching area, is they emphasized earlier that the underground leaching area was substantial and necessary in order for the engineering department to put their support behind the project. That underground leaching area obviously is required to be where it's at. And they've not assessed, at least I don't have that information, how far back that geo-grid fabric would extend. And if the fabric extends within the leaching area, then presumably there's some sort of issue or conflict. One would have to be moved or lessened or changed. And that's the only reason that I mentioned the issue is, is to say that if there is an alternate or other designs for that retaining wall, I'd wonder what it is, because again, these rely on a horizontal assembly all the way through the structure. And we do have, in some cases, on the top of walls, we need guardrails and those need to penetrate these systems and stuff. So it needs some holistic engineering, at least conceptually. And that's the only reason I bring it forward, is that as an example, if the retaining wall design does conflict, they may be back to you with some alterations or working with engineering to change the alterations. And I just bring that up as a point of clarity. Not that it should stop anything, but again, it might be a thought to think about the two.
So just a point on that is, one thing, you're using the gravity wall, the large blocks, right? Because the cross-section I'm looking at doesn't, there's, there is no tieback, you know, for the netting. You know what I'm saying? You rely just totally on the weight of the blocks, right?
I'm not gonna pretend to be a structural engineer. I have no idea. We have a structural, we have a structural team that's gonna prepare the plans that are far smarter than I am.
Well, I'm just looking at the cross-section and.
Understood. That's kind of a more of a generic cross-section that we took from, it's the maker of the wall that'll be, that'll be constructed, but. Kind of a more, more generic detail. Obviously, you have a full set of design plans with all the and all the structural requirements.
Yeah, then to Jason's point is, if it, if it was gonna be installed, you'd want it, he'd wanna know what, whether it's gonna interfere with it. I mean, what I'm looking here, I think it's just a total gravity wall with the size of the blocks are what keeps it, so. Anyways.
Understood. Yeah, so that's, that's part of our requirement that, you know, for safety purposes, for the town's you know, ease of mind, that obviously we have a fully designed and structurally engineered wall. I mean, I've never really had to have a fully designed wall before, a board before. It's usually kind of after the fact kinda thing. We show the wall on the plans with the, you know, with the grades and the height, you know, the type of wall we're gonna show, which is generally kind of more than enough for these kind of boards, but you know, the kind of, after the fact is when we do the full design.
Yeah.
After, after we've gotten approval, so we don't, obviously don't waste our time either. At least, you know, waste our nice client's money and time too.
Can I say something? I understand what he's saying, but based on what we just heard the building commissioner say, it sounds like we need to know the answer to that question. About, you know, I mean, I'm not.
The fabric, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's easy to say we don't normally do that, but we do. We've done that other places.
Yeah, and that's what I just said. We have, I'm just going by what we've done periodically, historically. And I can, one case I can remember immediately was Court Street. Vayos, the, behind the.
Oh, yeah.
The old Pac TV building, that wall there.
So, so, so Mr. Chair, I have a proposal or a suggestion. So, you know, again, Chris York's point is, you know, it's a substantial exercise to fully engineer the retaining wall. That's gonna also be, from the board's standpoint, a separate special permit that you're gonna have to deny or not based, I would think partly on feedback from the engineering department. So would it suffice for this process that we're involved in right now to get a letter from a structural engineer at GPI explaining how that geo-textile fabric, whatever the heck it's called, how it ties into the site and doesn't negatively impact drainage? Would that at least suffice to keep this process moving while we, in parallel, design the wall and bring that special permit application forward?
How do you feel about that, Ed?
I think it all should be done together.
I do too.
I think that we're designing a project that I think has, I know the rest of the board likes the traffic issue, I don't. But I think that there should be one special permit included. It should address the wall. And there should be, this is a special permit, it all should be one. There should be one submission. Because, say we approve it today, but then we can't, we approve where it is, and then we find out, oh, because of the depth of the, of the basin, we can't have the wall over here. We gotta change this around. And what if we end up, because of the water also, we should get a, I wanna make sure it's not hurting the town. I don't like the traffic. I think there should be, we're piecemealing the, the application here. That should be both done at the same time. And I just think we're, I think we're, we're jumping to, because what's happened is they're worried about the drainage, they figured out they needed a larger wall. So this plan was originally gonna be fine, until they figured out, no, it's not gonna work. Because the amount of water, to keep all the water on the site, it has to go deeper. And because it's going deeper, this plan isn't gonna work, so we have to get another special permit for the wall. And I think it's just one plan. I think they should be both be together.
So, so may I address that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Speak to it? So, you know, I, I understand the board doesn't like to see things piecemeal, you know, a. know, a common exception would be, I know, sometimes this board, for instance, prefers to see signage dealt with separately. I, I've personally never understood that, but that seems to be the, the tradition here. In this case, again, I just want to, you know, being as deferential as I can to this board's authority, just remind everyone, we're not here for a new special permit, we're here to satisfy this condition. So, I'm not trying to downplay the technical details, the site needs to work, and I think that's why you've got your, your engineering department, Mr. Silva's department, looking at everything. So, if they, they won't issue a building permit if we don't submit good construction drawings, and I think you've got a second safeguard here, which is, we do need a separate special permit for that retaining wall. So if we were to, if you guys were to give us your blessing, not even tonight, let's say, a month from now, we come back and you're satisfied with water, you know, in particular, which was the focus of, of the, of the first concerns, and you said, okay, you've satisfied the condition, subject to, you know, satisfying any remaining, hopefully at that point, very minor DPW comments, that would be at Energy North's risk and peril to, you know, advancing this project, coming back to you guys, spending more money on, on me, the engineers, the time involved with it, you know, if they end up not coming up with a workable retaining wall and don't get a special permit, this, this conditional approval or approval of the condition is worthless. We can't, we can't build the project, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and re-engineer the drainage swale if, if we can't build a retaining wall that satisfies the engineering folks and you. So I don't think you're giving us, I don't think you're putting the town at risk by approving tonight's petition, again, even if it's done a month from now, I don't, I don't think you're putting the town at risk that something's going to get built with an unsafe retaining wall. There's a lot of safeguards yet to come on that one. That, that's for what it's worth, I just, that's how I view it.
Okay, well, so, one point confuses me, Mr. Di Ambrosia. You say you're here for just a condition, but I say you're here for a new permit, 4165, and it was advertised that way, and that's what we're looking at, and that's what we're going to do, okay? We're not doing a condition on the old permit, we're doing a brand new permit, okay? And so, as we've talked before, we want a complete application, and this is an incomplete application, okay? So, we're giving you an opportunity to get a, a continuance and get the information and make sure that our building commissioner is satisfied, make sure that we have all of the information needed, because we're not the planning board, we don't do this, and you and I have had a discussion about this, okay? So, all the material, make sure Mr. Sylvia is happy. When you get that all together, then you come back, we do a nice, easy hearing, everybody's happy, and that's the way it's, needs to be.
Okay, so, so, just, just, so just so we know what we're coming back with, do you want us to file the special permit application for the retaining wall before we come back to you?
Yep. Do you, is, wait a minute, Mr. Sylvia, is that appropriate?
I, I, I brought the issue up because I do think that, given the tightness and the sensitivity of the site, that the retaining wall construction is integral to the site, and that at least more, even a letter from a structural engineer giving an outline on the general construction details, or how much footprint it's going to take up, or its lack of conflict on the site, because I, I think Mr. Larry commented on some segmented walls are just static and, and don't need even fabric or grids, and so there are a variety of products this engineer, A engineer, can take off the shelf, and that, at this point, if they're going with what we see a lot, this fabric on these smaller segmented walls, it does look like there could be a conflict there. And that was my only question, is this, how that wall would affect the, the site? Right now is, is, there's really no way to answer that, and maybe a little more information, it doesn't have to be earth shattering, and just the concept of saying, well, this is what we plan on doing with it, this is our plan A, if this doesn't work, this is our plan B with the wall, it's going to be static, it's going to be, you know, reversal lock, it's, it's not a conflict, and that right now, we can't say that. And I would hate for, personally, as the building commissioner, to be in the position to have to make a decision what's an acceptable alternative, which seems like is quite frequent here in this town, and I don't like making choices on what's acceptable alternatives. I like to make choices on what's approved in the plans that this board approves, not concept, but details. So, that's all.
Jason, I kind of didn't give me a straight answer here a little bit. Don't, don't we think we need to dive in and see if it's going to work?
I can't offer to the board what your position is, but I do think that right now...
Sounds wishy-washy to me.
I, I don't, I, I can't tell you that the two won't conflict, but I do feel confident that, that a good engineer will have solutions to make both of them work. Right now, they focus on the drainage systems because Rick at engineering, at our engineering department, has made them focus on those, and they've come to you with apparently a design that works, and that's great. But whether Rick noticed this or not noticed it, I don't know, I just looked at the plans, and we have another project that the wall system and the grid is conflicting with some site issues that wasn't thought of in the beginning, and I just present that now to the board, so that you're not faced with, again, an alternative design because things didn't work out, and they weren't thought of at the same time. The engineer that designs the wall should know what's going on top of the material that's supported, so in this case, you have a leaching system that could have breakaway factors. Now, if that engineer's not aware of those breakaway factors that are in that leaching system that charges, as an example, with all that water, that wall could fail, but if the engineer knows that the building's going on there and knows that there's going to be a leaching system on there, then they make the right choice on the retaining wall systems to make sure it supports all those loads. So it should be, in good practice, holistic approach, that's all.
You're going to have to come back anyway, there's almost a dozen and a half comments from the twelfth that need to be addressed, the water needs to be addressed. It's clear that one impacts the other between the wall and the drainage, so you might as well bring us the information.
Might as well just include it and get the permit now, all in one.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so that, I mean, to, to pull together an application for the retaining wall special permit is going to be a good month, I think, with, just, just so you know, I, I, I'm not saying that's your problem, it's ours.
You should have had that already, you should have had all of this stuff, you know, Rob, that we want a full package, and you know it wasn't a full package, so don't come here and complain.
I'm not complaining, I'm just telling you that we're not going to, in terms of the calendar, we're not going to be back here in two weeks or four weeks, which, again, and then once it's published, it's going to be probably August.
It is not, Mr. Chair.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking for a favor, I'm just telling you that it's going to be a while.
Yes.
Why, smile, yeah. While I don't disagree with Ed, it, it, it seems to me that this should have been part of the whole deal.
Exactly.
It seems bizarre to me, I mean, we just went through this up the street here, remember the folks that wanted to make the big addition in the backyard?
Yep.
And they said, well, we're going to build a nice wall, it's going twelve feet high or something. Now, I don't think we had them design the wall, but they came with documentation from the engineer.
Engineer with a stamp!
Okay. I'm just, I just want to say, I would personally be okay with that. I do think it's crazy that you would come in for the wall after this, because like, I mean, it seems almost stupid for us to approve something when we don't know the wall behind it's going to work. Now, in fairness to, to all, I mean, when, when we, when those of us that were here approved this years ago, we all knew it was going to be a gas station. We also know now that nobody just builds a gas station, so we have a Taj Mahal instead of a gas station there, right? We've got a, right, a car wash that pumps a lot of water, and, and, so, and a convenience store. So with that said, I, I just wanted to say that I agree with Ed, but I would be comfortable, I think, based on what the building commissioner said, if we had a very detailed letter from the engineer saying he was fully aware of the two areas and how they interface or don't interface, and, and we could do it that way. But it, I mean, at this, at this point, I, I don't know how they would combine the two. Have you filed the permit for the wall yet?
No, and, and again, the reason, and, and it's not excuse, but the reason we haven't is because we didn't realize we were going to need a wall that exceeded twelve feet until, what, a week ago, two weeks ago?
Okay, see, so that even reinforces...
Yeah, so we already had this on the books.
We're in a bad spot here.
Right, we had this hearing on the books, at which time we realized, oh, gosh, we're going to need a higher wall, so again, it wasn't, we're not trying to do this piecemeal, it's, it's better for everyone to do it all together, I don't disagree. This wasn't intentional, no.
Yes, please.
Would it be difficult to, looking at what was published, that addressing the wall be not substantial, so that this petition could be modified, so that it doesn't have to be republished to address that, so making that original petition, you file a modification of the petition, and to include, address issues with the wall, so you don't have to publish again, so that we avoid the second publication, and considering it from a board perspective, not substantial, so we could get it all in one little package. Is that okay, Jason?
That's a great question, but I would...
It's too substantial.
Say that that's not a guarantee, I think that because our bylaw has written clearly a requirement for retaining walls in excess of twelve feet, and it references a specific section of the bylaw, and that legal advertisement that went out for this does not reference that section of the bylaw, that it'd be a stretch to argue that you could grant the relief that's not been advertised.
I'm just trying to get away with something.
I know, I know, and it sounded good until, till...
If it wasn't written, I'd say yes.
The stick in the mud's gumped up.
If it wasn't written in the bylaw or otherwise, I'd say yes.
So, there's lots of times where we have addressed petitions, areas of the bylaw that were not in the initial petition.
An example?
Say, dealing with lighting.
No, can you, a specific example?
All right. The, on exit five, when we approved Starbucks, not addressing the lighting there.
That's an open thing that's coming back, so...
You asked for a specific example, I gave you one, so I covered.
Typical attorney. What are you two, go drinking afterwards? Discuss these things!
So what I'm trying to state, wait, let me finish, let me finish, is there, I'd like to see if we could get this case wrapped in one.
So would I.
And, and I wonder as...
But Jason just put a kibosh to that.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm just throwing my opinion out there, I think I'd defer, but if I'm the client, I, his client, I'd want to make sure everything's crossed and dotted.
So, so, look, my, my perspective is, it's going to take a couple months, I was just caucusing, to, to get the drawings together to submit that special permit application for the retaining wall. So, we can submit that, we can continue this, you know, to what we think is a date that will line up realistically, and then, you know, handle them one after the other at the, at the next date that works, so at least they're being heard together, you know?
Well, a question here, though, I just have one question for Jason, though. Where they do reference, they're not twelve foot, but in this original filing, they do have the walls in here, would it be, would we have to re-advertise it just because of the twelve foot?
Because it was already in the...
It's, it's in the plans.
It may be in the detail, but in the legal advertisement, the, the section of the bylaw that you're granting relief from should be in the legal ad, and we, you know, Richard Manfredi days, we used to write a lot of scenarios that said something like applicant seeks relief of 203-53 and any other waivers the board sees fit. Now, that's where I'd give argument to your position, Ed, to say, well, maybe I can include additional waivers in the bylaw that's not written, because the language of the legal ad kind of threw that out there, but again, that was, that was the one way we left things kind of open for the board to create.
So, so we don't have that in the current legal ad?
No, we, we don't, but again, that's, I think that's...
Can we start doing that?
Well, that's something that I think, Rob might like.
That sounds good to me.
But I think that's something for counsel to, you know, provide support to you guys.
David.
Just a couple thoughts. We're likely to be continuing this evening because there, there's enough open issues, they have to come back. I could see that, you know, when we apply conditions, we write a, because we have, we know the signage has to come back unless it can, but the suggestion is that we have a tight condition that the retaining wall, or actually, you know, any of the plans, but the retaining wall shall be designed by a licensed structural engineer, and the building permit shall not be issued until the retaining wall is approved, because structural engineers, as Jason just said, have different ways to do it. You know, there's multiple technologies, include even pouring a concrete wall. I'm not sure what the right answer is, I'm not, but a tight condition that says they get no building permit until there's an approved structural design of the retaining wall. Likewise, have another condition, when it's condition time, that signage shall come back for a future permit, and occupancy permit shall not be granted, so put a condition on it that for both of them, they have to come back, consistent with our bylaws, for, for their special permits, but by putting tight conditions in, they can still get the overall permit approved. So that's the approach I'd suggest.
Attorney Di Ambrosia just suggested that they're going to, us, we could possibly see both, both petitions the same night.
Which, which also could be fine, whether they're combined or they're separate.
Because I prefer not to hear both of them on separate nights.
Then make, but, but again, it's not, we're not, we're suggesting conditions, but we're not assigning them tonight, because you do have to come back.
It doesn't matter, as long as we hear them on the both nights, I'm fine with that.
If it can be arranged.
Yes, if it can be arranged.
If, if you can get the scheduling to fix that.
Because I just don't want to hear this case and go through hours and hours, and then have a condition that says, well, we'll condition this on it being a goodbye to the structural engineer, and then have that, you don't, we can't, it doesn't cut it.
Okay.
Right, and I, I would, the way I feel is, when this case comes back...
We need everything.
We need it, and we need the structural engineer, whether, whether they've gone after their special permit or not, I would like to see a letter from them saying, this works.
Yeah, we, because we've conditioned tall walls like that, you remember on Court Street, there was a big tall retaining wall at the back? And I think we approved it when we said you have to have a letter from a structural engineer.
That was, that was veil.
Yeah, veil, and we did to this guy on his house up the street here.
Right, yeah, right.
And that was just for two parking spaces or something, or a few parking spaces, he never has built that.
So, how long, Rob, do you think it'll take to get all this information together?
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get the water stuff addressed quickly, because I, I think we are there, except for some written documentation. I think it's going to take a couple months to file the retaining wall application, and then, again, typically, we're about, what, Denise, forty-five days out from filing to his EBA date, I mean, roughly? So, yeah, so, so my thought would be if it's two months to submit, and then, I mean, we're probably looking at a hearing in September.
Fifteen, September fifteenth?
Or, or, I mean, do you want to push it? It's up to you guys. Okay, I mean, last week in August, is that good for everyone? It's, it's...
August eighteenth?
I thought we were closed for the month of August.
Okay, Monday, August eighteenth would work for us. Okay, Monday, August eighteenth, would work for us. Do you, do we have a quorum issue in late August, or are we usually pretty good with vacations and stuff?
We usually have quorum issues in August every year. I'm, I may not, I gotta look at, I think I'm gonna be in Europe.
Yeah, I'd rather go to September, because every single August for, for ten or fifteen years that I can remember, there's been a problem, somebody has been away, graduations, or grandchildren, or, you know, those things.
I know that I'm not here that third week of August, I'm not here that third week of August.
You're not here.
I'm not here.
So, that won't work. And you're not either?
No, I'm here.
So, probably September would be better, Rob, and then that gives you plenty of time to get everything.
I mean, once you think, I mean, I don't know if you could speak for your structural engineer, I mean, if you could do it quicker, I don't, I don't wanna put you in a spot.
I guess the issue is the quorum.
Right, yeah.
I'd love to try for the August hearing.
That's what September brings.
Not, well, well, we'd have to go through the planning board also for our retaining wall, correct? As, on advisory capacity, this board.
I can't say.
Yeah, I mean, it's a special permit, right, so, it's a separate special permit, the planning board's advisory to the zoning board appeals, I would hope the West Plymouth Engineering Committee wouldn't wanna look at a retaining wall, but you don't know, so again, I'm just thinking, realistically, we've gotta, if we file in two months, so we file August second, and then we've gotta go to the planning board, and then the ZBA, so, you know, it, and I know you don't keep the calendar for the planning board, Denise, but do we have time to get on, if we file by even July thirty-first? I imagine we would have, be able to get on the planning board agenda for, you know, August sixth, or, six would be their first hearing, the first Wednesday?
It's a bad time of year.
If you file on July thirty-first?
Yeah, we wouldn't get that date, would we?
No.
So, so we'd be getting a planning board date of like, the twentieth of August, right?
Hopefully.
Best case, and then you guys are the second and fourth Mondays, right?
And the first is Labor Day.
Also, planning second and fourth, yeah, but if we filed, if we filed July thirty-first, we wouldn't get a, I mean, I, I'm not sure what to say, right, it's-
September fifteenth would probably-
September is iffy.
Well, well, if, we, we'd ask for continuance to August eighteenth, and then we'd have to really hustle on our end to get our submissions to the, you know, get the permit application filed earlier than July thirty-first, to give the planning board time, we, we understand that, so, that, that's our request, but, you know, we're-
One thing, we'll probably need a waiver signed.
Yeah, we'll give you a waiver, yeah.
Before you leave tonight, but I would like to see both cases at the same time, but if we can't do that because of conflicts with the planning board, then let's just get this case taken care of, forty-one sixty-five, and-
And the other things.
And then if they can get it scheduled, so both of them land on the same night to us, you know, I'm sure Denise will explain to them, we're trying to do that, if they can find, if they can't, we can't help that. So you're gonna have everything ready for August eighteenth?
Yes, sir.
The water, the, the retaining wall with a stamped engineer letter, or something explaining that?
Yes, at a minimum, we can have a, we can have a thorough explanation from a structural engineer about the wall, we'll have the DPW squared away, we'll have the water issue squared away, and again, God willing, we'll be able to present the special permit petition for the retaining wall itself, but if we don't, we'll have a good letter from a structural engineer, explaining how it doesn't-
Before we go any further, what were your concerns about, someone besides me had diagonal parking concerns, who was it?
I, I mentioned it, but it also isn't the DPW letter, one of the, the twelfth comments.
Yeah, the, the, the letter, that was a-
On August eighteenth, we'll have a clean letter, well, Nicole will be having a clean letter from engineering DPW, addressing all these comments, comment from-
Yeah, I think there were twelve things that we-
There's a bunch of comments, and they're all minor, but it's just stuff I gotta go through for drainage wise purposes, something that's gonna kill the project, it's just-
Okay, we need that. We, we usually get a standard letter from the DPW in response to their comments, you go and satisfy them, they send us a report that says, can, condition satisfied, or satisfied, or will be satisfied before occupancy, or, just so we know, that, that you've communicated with them, and that there is some kind of a reasonable bit of cooperation. Anything else? Okay, I await a board's motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue case number forty-one sixty-five to the date of August eighteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this, I have a motion by Michael, and a second by Kevin, to continue case forty-one sixty-five until six PM, August the eighteenth. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Okay, thanks, guys, we'll, we'll get a good package for you next time.
Thank you. Now we have a- Wait a minute.
Was this, this is the gas station, this is Canaan, Canaan Fuels?
You, you were on the original anyway.
I was on the original.
And that's, this is a-
Buster and I.
Yeah, you were too.
Yeah, so it's your program.
No, 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 it's your- We made the modification, that's the only-
No, thanks. You gotta give us a, just a second, folks.
Buster, I have Mike Knott seated on that, and David seated.
Okay.
This was the modification, right?
Okay.
That's why I say it was, you should go by, it was on the modification.
I'm gonna go get out of this one.
And go to the-
Okay, this, is this twenty-nine forty-six?
I'm sorry for the delay, but for, for the folks in the audience, and especially for the folks that are watching on television, we have changed from all paper to computers now, and they gave us computers, and they gave us some training, but some of us aren't as good at understanding the training as others, so we're having a little problem getting into things. Once we get going and find it on this computer, then it goes kinda smooth, so, tonight, we have a informal hearing for case forty-one twenty-three, and case forty-one fifty-five, Conner Realty Group, and six, eighty-six and eighty-eight Sandwich Street, seated on this, Denise, who is, again, I haven't got my notes from before, so-
I know it was on the decision, original decision, but this is a modification.
I, I have it as Buster, Ed, Kevin, Peter, David.
I was missing.
Okay.
Same names.
You do.
Okay. Who is going to present this voice?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, my name is Hal Chuba, I'm a consulting engineer with offices in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and I represent the applicant, Canaan Realty, on this application. This is a modification of a special permit that you approved, just to refresh your memory, this is the properly located eighty-six, eighty-eight Sandwich Street. Currently, there's, there's two lots, one lot, eighty-six, has the gas station, has, currently has a small five-hundred square foot convenience store, three, multiple dispensing fueling pumps with the overhead canopy to the south, and there's also an existing commercial building that was used as an office, I believe it had the three units, the total square footage of that office, about thirty-three hundred square feet, and the convenience store is about five-hundred square feet, so, on the original application that we came in front of you, we wanted to demolish the five-hundred foot retail store, and the, the retail, the office building, both of them, and built, construct a two thousand forty-eight square foot convenience store to the north of the site, you can see the location of the new store, at that time, we kept the canopy as is, that was, I believe, the original special permit. Going through the process of permitting, the, the owner, who's here with me tonight too, also decided that he wanted to, might as well, going through the renovation of the entire property, to remove the existing canopy, and replace it with the smaller, more compliant with zoning. If you recall, the old canopy had three pumps underneath, parallel to Sandwich Street, and the pump was nine point seven from the property line, we proposed a smaller canopy that was gonna be pushed twenty-two feet from the property line, but we're turning the orientation of the pumps ninety degrees to allow for movement around the pumps, and I explained that last time, with this orientation, what we call the dive-in, you'll be able to maneuver around the pumps, depending on where your fuel tanks is, at the old orientation, you would have to pull up to where your tank is on one side, and there's no room around the, the canopies. There was a concern from the board members at that time, that this might generate more traffic, or, you know, maybe we should look at the site and look into, you know, maybe making one of the curb cuts one way in, one way out, you wanted to look at the traffic, you had some issue, you wanted to look at the fuel delivery, I believe the building inspector asked about signage, and you wanted to see more detail. So what we did, we resubmitted a package to the board, we looked at the traffic generation, we looked at the traffic generation from the data published by the ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, and we did the comparison between the gas station currently with the five-hundred square foot, and what they proposed, it'll be some increase, but it's very minor increase, because most of us know that gas stations are not traffic generator, not traffic destination. People that live in Plymouth, work in Plymouth, they go to this gas station, you might get some extra traffic from people passing by, driving by for the gas station, but people not driving from Kingston, or Sitewatt, or nearby places to gas at this specific gas stations, there's a gas station on every block and everywhere. So we, we did that, also, I talked to the owner, at that time, I promised the board, I'm not sure, I need to talk to the owner, and he was willing to, to restrict the movement the, the, into the site, into one way in, one way out, and I think that was one of the recommendations from the board, and I think on this plan, we do show the, the orientation of the, although the, the width of the drivers will have to be, will have to remain the same, to ensure that we can get a fuel truck into the property. I also submitted another plan, showing how the fuel is being delivered, and I think it's, it's another, you should have it in your packet. I know there was a concern about no stop, I added stop signs, because I think it was one of the, and I said, I'll gladly add a stop sign on the next submission, I also indicated there'll be, do not enter signs on the, on the opposite side of the driveway, so people know they cannot use that, you know, it says, do not enter, so on, on the, on the westerly side, you can only enter from the easterly side, and exit from the westerly side. Also, I put all the signage on the plans, I think the building commissioner last time had a question about the signs, I indicated that the pylon freestanding sign is staying, we're not touching it, it's on the southwest corner of the lot. The sign on the canopy would be exactly replaced with two signs with the same size, I indicated the sizes of the, and there's a couple of signs on the building that says Canaan Fuel on them, that in good conditions, if we can move them to the new building, we will, they'll be the same size, if we can't, we will replace them with the same exact size, size. So, there'll be no increase of signage, no new signage on the building, the, we've taken care of the circulation, and the fuel delivery, and we submitted the, the traffic impact, and we're hoping that this would satisfy what we're looking for, and, and again, this is an amendment to what was approved before, at, at this time, if the board feels that we have satisfied your concerns, and you wanna move forward, and approve this amendment, we'll be glad, we'll be happy, if, if the board doesn't feel that way, we can go back to the original application, which would keep the, the pump the way, you know, with the canopy, but I think this orientation is a lot safer, now that we have the restriction of the, with the driveways coming in and coming out, and also, I'm not sure if you have the, the, I might have a copy of the design of this, the canopy, which I think we submitted at the last submission, it has the, an A-frame style, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to give you something now that you might, this is not part of the, this was submitted at the last meeting too, and it was approved by the Plymouth Community Center, also, this was approved by the planning board, we've been to the planning board on this, so, we hope that, this is our last stop for this modification, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I think when you came last time, we had not seen that.
No.
We'd never seen that.
No.
I don't think we've still ever seen it.
If I may, I mean, this is not part of your record, we, just for informational-
Well, and just a comment, you said it was approved by some-
Well, it was recommended by the planning board.
Yeah, they, they don't approve anything.
Yes.
No, no.
No, I just wanna ask you one question, and I think I know the reason, the entrance is at the traffic light.
Correct.
And I believe that's so people can go right into the store?
Most, most of your traffic is from people making a right turn in.
I thought, well, why wouldn't you put the exit at the traffic light, but I think it's because you want them to get to the store, right?
Right, most of your traffic, most people make a right turn in, and right turn out, I think, it's, it's, it, you go with that circulation, rather the other one is more confusing.
Okay.
I'm actually not on this one, the modification, but, I mean, when I had brought up the idea of the one-way, and the reason for that was, more than once, about two or three times, when I- when I come to the light after this came before us, I started to pay attention to what was going on. And I'll tell you, the people going the other way, that were gonna eventually go through the light, that could take the left-hand turn, would be going, they'd cut in the other lane and go about 75 feet on the wrong side of the road to get in that, now it's an entrance and an exit, you know, and that was my main concern. I saw it done three times when I was there. So, that was kind of a, you know, just a suggestion on my part, you know, because I looked at that. The only thing, curiosity is, well, two comments I'm gonna make is, so the fuel tank, I noticed on the turning radius though, that actually comes in contact with the building. Is that...
No way.
Not the building, the canopy?
No.
On the plan, it actually shows it drawn. It actually cuts it...
Oh, it might, it might clip the corner, but this is 14-6, the clearance on the canopy, not the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
But what about the cars that are parked there getting gas and doing stuff like that? If there's a car parked on either end of that, on the inside, the tanker truck can't get in and out.
We go through all the time. I mean, most of, the delivery is controlled, delivery, I mean, the applicant can get the delivery off peak hour. It's not like, right now, it's worse, because you have a building on the north side of the pumps, and I don't know how he's getting the delivery right now. If he can make the delivery now, and this is much improved, but I'm not sure if, you know...
I've been to other places where the trucks come in, you put cones up so nobody can...
Yeah, well, we do that. If he can call prior to delivery saying I'm coming in, they can put a cone on the outside. And, but, most of the delivery, I mean, we can get the delivery anytime, basically nowadays, you know. They monitor the volume on the, on the fuel 24 hours, you know, on the computer. They know exactly what they need, the gas when they need it, and they can call and get the delivery, so...
One more? And one more comment I just wanna make is, so this, the A-frame type roof, who brought this up? The steering committee, or did you guys submit?
Yeah, I'll send the steering committee.
I mean, be honest with you, I think that's kind of an overdesign.
Older?
No, I mean, I don't, I kinda think it should stay the same. I mean, I really...
Flat?
I really caution, you know, whether you want to do that.
Mr. Leary, that's the first time I've been to maybe 200 boards. What we refer to as the Cape Cod design, this complements the design of the building. I think if you're in the center, a village center, to have a flat roof with the flat, like, flat roof building on a modern building, I don't think it fits in the Plymouth Center. But again, it's a recommendation, and I don't think it's, for us, I mean, my client probably saved another $50,000. But I thought, we all thought it was gonna be more attractive and more fitting for the Plymouth Center. But the size of the canopy is not gonna change. It's still 20 by 72. The horizontal projection of the, so whether it's a flat roof or has a A-frame, it's up to the board. I mean, if you don't want the A-frame, that's fine.
Well, it would help me if I could see it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I mean...
We've never seen it.
Yeah, I submitted this 16 times. It's on the, I have a copy here, if you like.
Yes, please.
I mean, if you wanna push this another meeting so you can see the canopy, I, this is, I don't know what the...
You don't have to get all happy about it.
No, but I mean, you know, I understand it's a new system. You're not used to it. I'd be glad, I asked Denise...
No, 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 let's see the plan.
No, it should have been part of the plan. You did show it to us on April 14th, informally.
Yeah, informally.
And, you know, I expected to see it as part of this package, and it wasn't there, so...
Just a gate. CP?
Okay. No, I'm not saying I have any issue. I just had not seen it.
See, I remember dropping off 16 copies of the large plans when, before they switched to the computer system. And the canopy was included, both the, the flat option and the A-frame option.
I sorta do, but I wasn't on the case at that time. Yeah, yeah, you want this? I don't wanna. Ed, did you see that? Okay, next. Yes?
I have a series of questions. The first is, you prepared the traffic report? Was that an engineering report that your firm prepared? Yes. So, you didn't go to a independent traffic...
No, we looked at the traffic generation from the ITE. That's what we do all the time.
Okay, just wanted to be clear that, on many other applicants, you know, it'll be a separate traffic engineer who puts things together, but you pulled them together?
Yeah. It's a modification of a gas station from three pumps to three pumps, going from 500 square feet to 2,000 square feet, yeah. We're not building it on...
Well, wait a minute. You said last time there'd be no increase in traffic, and I countered that, and there is an increase in traffic.
No, I said there'll be modest increase in traffic.
Okay, well, there's an increase, it's pretty good.
Okay. Okay, I have more questions. Sure. Part of your narrative told us that you'd be adding two full-time employees and four to six part-time employees. How many employees do you have now, and how many parking spaces are dedicated to employee parking, and will you need more employee parking because you have new, more employees?
We have two employees at the highest shift, so. We have three parking spaces for employees in the back.
So, there's no increase need for parking spaces for employees?
We have three parking employees in the back. We don't need more than three parking employees. We will never have, we won't have three employees at the same time. We'll have different shifts, but there'll be two employees at the highest shift.
Okay, my next question is, you know, in a past report, there were multiple conditions that included, you know, not just the traffic report, but investigating, adjusting the signal timing, depending on what was happening. Have you investigated what's involved with the signal?
That was a comment from DPW, and I think we addressed it at that time.
I'm not so sure, but...
Well, you can go back to the report.
There was a suggestion of, you know, you need a grease interceptor, and potentially, and there, that was number 30 of the DPW. And they also were worried about the trash truck pickup.
Yeah.
Making it in and out, and, you know, things look very tight there.
We addressed those comments, sir, yeah. We sent the, we showed them the template of the truck picking up the trash, and we, I believe we added the grease trap to the site plan.
Okay, well, the plan that we received had, you know, did not have dimensions on it. So, you were showing the, you know, how the fuel oil truck moved around. You showed the cars, you know, backed up at the parking thing, but double-checking dimensions and clearances. I did not see that on the updated plan.
The, and the reason on this circulation plan, because it has so much information with the signage, we just showed the arrows coming in, coming out. If you look at the fuel delivery, it has all the dimensions on it.
Okay. And I will say, I think the one-way in and one-way out does make sense to me. I walk by there probably once or twice a day, and, you know, I see people just crossing, you know, directly from South Street or Summer Street, or South Street, directly in, and that does work. I think it works better. But anyway, so, I remain very concerned about, still is a tight site.
Nope. I, last time he was here, I asked about one-way in, one-way out. There were discussions about signage. I'm good.
Is there more information needed, or is everybody happy? Speak up.
I'll make the motion to approve what the conditions listed.
I will second.
All those in favor? And you're opposed? Okay. So, it passes, but it has opposition. That concludes case number 4123.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
And I apologize for, it's kind of frustrating because of the new system and going back and forth, and with the information, it's not like we don't provide. I mean, you can talk to Denise, and she can tell you anytime she asks for something. I made sure, I delivered myself the next day, so it's not something we're trying not to give you, or, but sometimes things probably fall through the cracks or something. Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. I believe that concludes this evening's business. Thank you, and I await a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Thank you all. Good night.